Okay, it's, uh, what day is today? The 8th of November, 2019. I'm gonna call the selectmen's... Is this a work session?
Work session.
Work session to order. First appointment is with Jim Bean and H and B.
Welcome back. This is tomorrow.
Thank you.
This is to assess the road conditions on Federal Corner Road and... Is that one or two roads?
Yeah, Ledge.
Ledge Hill. Yeah, Ledge Hill, which is the most important road in the country.
You've been on it over the...
Makes sense.
The fee to H and B, proposed fee is $5,500 on Federal Corner, $5,500 on Ledge Hill. And maybe you can give us a 20-second description of what it is you're doing for $5,500.
Sure. First, I drove both roads with Jim probably a month ago. We'll get back. Just to get the sense of what the concerns were. And then, so our intent would be for us to provide an engineer that would start at, probably on both roads, the upper limit of the concerns or the lower limit, and walk the full extent, which goes from the camp down to the intersection on Federal Hill or Federal Corner, and then it was dame up to the intersection on Ledge Hill.
So we're going out. Will Andrew some?
No, just the town Federal Corner.
So, you know, I think there might be a discrepancy of where Willand starts and where Federal Corners ends. I consider the camp at the top of Federal Corners, well, to be the end of Federal Corners Road. I don't know, some people think it starts at the end of...
I know there's a residence out there before the hill or in the middle of the hill.
Correct.
So I'm assuming that's a Class 5 at least to there. But you're saying it's a Class 5 all the way to the camp where it turns into a grassy lane?
I've always understood to be that it's Class 5 to right at the end of Camp Leagles.
Yes. That's how I've seen it.
That's where you do maintenance.
Correct.
Right to the end of the camp.
So all the way to the wood line, wood line out there?
Almost. Basically, right, the entrance to their camp is where we stop plowing and...
Just beyond the entrance to the camp, there are two more structures on the right, correct?
There's a second driveway on the right.
Yep.
And there are two more...
There's two more buildings beyond the entrance to the camp, right?
I'll be honest with you, I don't remember. I haven't been out through that road in so long, to be honest with you. From the wood line on, it's been a few years.
I think one is just barely in the woods.
Okay.
Well, you go further up than that and there are residences on the back side of the pond that you can, if you're gonna come by land, you gotta drive up Land Road, and then they get a long lane that runs down to them. And I don't... Huh? You come, well, come from either end, yeah. It's actually easier to get to it from the Federal Corner end.
Yeah.
But I don't know if those folks ever drive in or if they just come in by boat, but...
No, they, yeah, we get traffic up through there from time to time.
I'll be honest with you.
So anyway, the fellow in the house since mid-hill, I think, is the fellow who came in asking about drainage, that sort of thing. So we're considering Federal Corner to run to the camp. I guess we need to address that issue as well.
Yep, and we did look at it.
Yeah, we spent some big time right at the end of that driveway. We looked at it pretty extensively while we were out there. But we, so on that road in particular, we're looking from the camp all the way down to the intersection or down to the low point, just down to the low point.
Down to Burley Road.
Yeah, is that where the, yeah, comes down, levels off, yeah, where the pavement is. So basically looking at that portion of the road. We would send an engineer out, perform a site walk for that full extent. Well, that engineer will have an aerial plan to sketch what they see on there and then bring it back into our office. And what we would present is, we would prepare our schematic plans with some design ideas as to what to do. And in some cases, I think specifically on Federal Corner, there's some alternatives 'cause there's ledge, apparently already blasting ledge, are we just gonna try to do pace wells? You know, those types of things that would need to be considered as part of a site walk or deeper swales or stone or even just the options are not endless, but they are many. And we would have to assess that while we were doing a detailed walk on site. So we'd come back is, we'd come back and prepare a plan, possibly multiple plans, depending on the alternatives that present themselves, you know, deep ditch excavation and so on, and then cost estimates associated with it and then write an assessment report. So that would give us the site walk, a couple sketches.
So we're only going to Burley Road?
From Burley Road up.
Okay, and how much of Ledge Hill Road are we doing?
Oh, we haven't talked about this.
We haven't done that.
I know, but I'm looking at the same number. And you're only doing 100 yards of, or 150 yards of...
And the reason for that is that Federal Corner seems as though there's multiple options that could be presented, so we're gonna have to look at multiple design considerations and prepare multiple cost considerations for Federal Corner. Ledge Hill, though a longer stretch, might have a more, seems on the surface to have more direct solutions and fewer significant alternatives to assessing cost out. And the thing with Federal Corner is it might be multiple alternatives for the full length, so you might have to come up with three design alternatives for Federal Corner, whereas Ledge Hill might be different alternatives depending on where you are on the road. It might be one alternative for certain stretches of the road versus three alternatives for the full length of the road. So it's, you know, it's a little bit, it's a different, the fees about is the same, but it's a different process for that one a little bit. You'll still end up with estimates and...
So on Federal Corner, you have less walking.
Correct.
But more pencil pushing, basically.
Correct, yes, yeah. It's more, it'll be more in-house time on Federal Corner trying to figure out what are the correct alternatives and then pricing all of those different alternatives for you to look at options. Ledge Hill is a longer stretch, so it might be defining more of what we're, what needs to be done on the road, but not necessarily as many alternatives in each section.
'Cause I don't know if, well, I suppose it doesn't have to weigh in on it, but I don't see any additional development going on on that road. So we're essentially building, this is on Federal Corner Road, 'cause that's all wetland in that dip on both sides.
Yep.
So essentially we're, and there's not that much traffic involved other than the camp in the summertime. So we're...
I did an inventory. How many people do you think visit that camp or make an appearance there in a year?
I have no idea.
Over 2,000?
Yeah. But that's probably a week's worth of traffic down Ledge Hill.
The other thing is, how do you get a snowplow up there? How do you get a fire truck up there when the fires occur other than...
No, I'm not saying not do it. All I'm saying is, you know, it doesn't need to be a big highway. It's a local road that has little use.
But it does have some significant drainage issues.
Yeah. And I don't know going downhill from that, and that doesn't drain that well. That's pretty much a perch, small. I look downhill from it, so...
Yeah. Yep.
It doesn't seem, it doesn't flow.
It pulls back over, creates another wetlands over by Ledge Hill near the power line there.
All right. Ledge Hill, you're gonna do what now?
Ledge Hill's same strategy, dame to the intersection with 170...
171.
Just, yeah, just a second.
Just from dame up.
Where most of the trouble seems to be.
Really? All right, as long as you pave my driveway, I'm happy. And that's gonna hopefully address the drainage, frosties and all that craziness that goes on up by Winter Circle in that area. I know it's called Ledge Hill Road for a reason.
Yeah, yes. I haven't seen anything actually from your proposal yet. I don't have a copy.
Yeah, I mean, you just drafted it, I can...
Okay, yep. I haven't seen anything, so walking in here for...
For the last year, for the last year and a half, I've tried to contact Lloyd Smith, who is the regional director around Newfound Lake and all of those communities over there. Every road is Ledge Hill Road and Federal Corner Road. I found out why he hasn't returned my 20 phone calls is he's retired. I found, I found out that there's a new director hired by the different towns, a lady, and she's in TD Bank in, I think, Northfield. And she writes grants for those towns. So I will continue to work that way. I'm a little bit frustrated that I leave, actually, five different instances. I got ahold of someone, left a message, and then I got the courtesy of a phone call.
So you mentioned you got 30 days' worth of work and 15 days' worth of crew. Is your expectation to get this done?
Yes, that's survey, this wouldn't be survey, we'd send an engineer up. This is great capacity.
But we're gonna have this ready to go for this year's budget, for 2020 budget?
If we, if we can get this signed up and we can get it into our schedule before there's snow covered and we can't see anything, then we'll do it this fall.
Okay.
If we can't see anything, then we can't, then we can't. But it was our intent when we said it that if we met today and that we still had some season, which it seems as though we do, for now, at least until Tuesday, maybe.
Yeah.
It all depends on how the snow plays out, you know? If we get significant snow cover and now we're gonna snowbank and I can't see the ditch lines, then I can't, I can't, we can't review it.
Anything else? I like to obtain a motion.
Subtle, second.
I'll go some there.
Aye.
Okay. I'll come aboard, yeah.
I took the opportunity to be the same as...
You get the little initial spots.
These were the pictures.
You get the little initial spots, too, right?
Do what?
Initial spots each year that were terms that need to be initialled.
And all the legal stuff.
Yes.
And then the bridge, Chris was gonna speak about it, but he's not here today. So I don't know how we'll...
Which bridge?
Uh, I don't know.
That was on the state plan and then got knocked off the state plan, yeah.
You can't speak to that, right, Josh?
I could bring questions back to Chris, but he'd really be the right person. He has been spending a lot of time understanding the state bridge aid program and its...
Boy, that's well said.
Current status. And we, as an organization, have been making it known to our representatives some of the challenges with the program for our communities. We are, Chris is very well versed in it and has been keeping up to speed and has a lot of information pertaining to that.
The monkey wrench in that functional is it's the only road onto the neck. What do you do while that bridge is incapacitated? So I think you're aware of it.
Complicated.
Yes. But...
Well, maybe we build Burley Road, not Burley Road, what's that road down there?
Banfield.
Banfield.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, do you think you have road through there?
It's, yeah, it's there and I think you could actually drive it if you get, you could probably look from your, pick up the ground clearance. But then, and then you come up...
You just said there's a house in the way.
Tell him if you have a Ferrari.
Yeah, that's right. And then you come up on Barber Pole, right there.
Oh, yeah. I think we would probably just put steel plates across the bridge before we started doing that.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah. Well, you know, you're probably talking, you're talking pretty substantial dollars to work the Banfield and Barber Pole road to where you could make it passable. So, you know, you'd have...
Probably some takings involved.
Yeah.
Maybe even a barge trip.
Yeah, that's right.
Get a ferry.
Yep.
You see the ferry landing. We go from the museum to that boat line to the very end of it.
Cross section.
That's right, yeah.
Well, there's a, there's an opportunity.
They can just scan it.
Yeah.
All right, so you're all set?
I believe so. If there's nothing for me to take back to Chris, I'll, he'll be coordinated and come back down.
Sounds good.
Good.
It's signed.
Thank you. Appreciate it, we'll get it in. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, next item on the agenda is...
I think Dave Jeffers, but we have a little time, so...
What happened to my agenda? Did I throw it away? I know it's James Bean.
Update?
Update.
Yeah, you have Dave Jeffers at 9:15, but Rob said we ran a little early for the bridge. Well, that's a good thing.
Oh, Jeffers?
Is this what you wanted? Please, we get it right away. Is this what you wanted?
Yeah, did I throw it away?
Yeah.
And then I think they added legal. So you can add legals to that.
She added government buildings, too.
4153, legal at that. Jim, you don't have to speak to that.
No, yes.
Okay. So highway department update, you've got $81,000 left.
Okay, so we did finish all the culverts, cross and recline roads that had been changed and recently paved back into the winter.
Those are all paved now, 'cause that was a mess a week ago.
Yeah, they're paved. Yeah, we were supposed, they said get them all ready and we'll come with them like a day or two.
Yeah.
We got them all ready and they said, oh, boy, we're like two weeks before we get there.
Two weeks or two.
Yeah, so we got them paved in. I'm just happy to get them done at this point because somebody who do paving this time of year is really tough. We've got the swim lines in and all the picnic tables have been put away. We worked on the Melbourne Town Wharf on the dock itself. We had to replace some beams, structural beams on that. We still have to get the ice blisters in, but I'm hoping that'll happen next week. We've been cleaning out ditch lines and culverts with the help of the fire department. And we've been cleaning up storm debris, as I think you're right here, may see. We've had to clean out beaver dams, you know, dams in the culverts in a couple of areas. We think we might have it under control finally.
Excuse me.
And we've also been trying to gravel the low road edges before winter. And we've had to replace several street signs around town. And we've been getting the equipment ready for plowing.
And how's that going?
Good. I think the town truck is back in operation. We had to change the pan, the chain for the sand horizon.
Yeah.
It rusted right out.
This is a ten-wheeler?
Yes. But we got that, cut the old one out, welded in a brand-new one, so that should buy us, you know, quite a bit of time. And it seems to be working good. We got the plows on it. Well, not the front, we haven't put the wing plow on. We got the front plow on and it operates correctly and stuff, so we're in pretty good shape. We'll probably have a little bit more maintenance to do, you know, change the fluids on the plow and that kind of stuff, but...
Have the inter-fender wells been installed?
We have not installed them yet. I wanted to actually wait to see how much money we had when it came time for recamming. I wanna see how the repair went before we went and spent the money and didn't have the, you know, the money for it. But I think we're in good shape, so I will, one of those, they have them in stock, actually. We just need to go down and pick them up.
And where are you inspecting the truck?
I plan to bring it over to Ossby and have them inspect it.
Do they put it up on a lift?
So I don't think they put it on a lift as much as they have jacks and you can slide underneath it very easily 'cause it sits off the ground pretty high.
You're not gonna take it to Crowells where they can put it on a lift and change any fluids you want?
I wasn't planning on it.
All the other towns do that with their big ten wheels.
They go to Crowells?
Yes.
Now, I could certainly look into it.
And they charge $35 for inspection.
For inspection? Yeah. I would, I think, what, we pay 45?
No, last year, the only bill on inspection was to a post office box in Wolfboro for $75. I'll just make the following comment. This is Lloyd Wood speaking as a selectman. I want all the equipment in Tuftonboro to be A1. And I want your guys to be guys who work on the roads and the firemen who put out fires and the police cruisers, you know, do it the same way. So that's where I'm coming from. And if it means we have to find the money someplace, I would work with it.
Well, we've got $3,185 left on the maintenance line. So we've got some cash there.
Except for a little bit less, you know, just 'cause we were working up until last night at 4 o'clock.
The, I mean, taking out what I know is gonna come out, 'cause it always does, I think you still get $65,000 in your budget. So it's a pretty good place to be in November, I think.
I'm feeling much better about it than I did two months ago.
Well, you've worked hard because you and I have estimated in past years winter maintenance this time of year, it's averaging about $58,000. And you've worked hard to, I know that was your target goal, so...
That said, we haven't done any, is the culvert line gonna get impacted? You haven't spent any money out of that. I know you did some culverts up on...
Oh, the culvert line?
Yeah.
So what I do on that, 'cause the culvert line is just for putting culverts in stock.
Right.
It's something that we wait till the end of the year and see how much, where our budget is at. And that's usually like the last of December, we call up and we get, we place the order.
So theoretically, the culverts that you replaced on Federal Corner Road are gonna get put back in stock at the end of the summer? Is that what you're saying?
We have, yeah, we have almost, we have very few culverts in stock at the moment. We're depleted.
The other thing that didn't get hit at all is apron paving. I don't imagine we're gonna do any of that.
Not looking good at the moment. Well, the crack sealing is still a possibility. I hope to do that. We do that this time of year.
So...
Wasn't some of the culverts done with the money from other accounts outside your budget?
We did, correct, yep.
That we had to use?
The SPS 30, uh, SP 30, excuse me. We used that, we wanted the culverts to do those two projects, which we still currently have only finished one project so far.
So even if you were to spend all of your culvert money on buying replacement culverts and all of your crack sealing money on sealing cracks, you still got $55,000 at the end of the day.
Which we still have to build a sand shed, a salt shed.
Right.
There's, yeah, there's plenty to do still.
Yep.
Well, can I talk to you about culverts?
Sure.
The COVID study of almost three years ago. We have 222 culverts, 32 are in failure, and 29 are in poor condition and need repair. How many have we done this year?
I know we checked some of those off the list, 'cause some of those weren't accurate. What, Pinus Graves Stone Culvert is on that list of red list, which is correct. And there was another one we saw on Chase Road, which is off the town property. They somehow went past the paving and they took inventory on a road that we don't take care of. So it's not all of that.
So that's 30 that were in failure, right?
Well...
And they lied about two.
Well, there was a handful that we found that were abandoned and things like that, so it's a little less, but I think we're down around a dozen that we have left that we have to change, so...
So can you make a point of getting in touch with Lake Region Planning and update them on the work that you've done and the culverts that you found?
So we actually did that.
I sent it to mapping people because he could go in and change the components that he has the shape file for the culverts. So he did do that. So Jim and I worked to be able to give him new printouts, updated, to show the conditions of the culverts, so his guys can continue to work.
I will say that I do like how they numbered everything.
Yeah.
Every culvert has a number, as opposed to before, where you just said, you know, by the third telephone pole, I'll talk.
Yeah.
So that's working out good. That actually helps us, you know, that we have a map and you can say, go change culprit number 43. And they can find that and...
Well, I think it's still important to get in touch with Lake's region planning so that they can update their files, so that when we need to get a printout or whatever.
Listen, I can, maybe the mapping people can even send the shape file back to them. I'll figure that out, though, yeah. Aaron's left, Aaron Daly left, so not that Dave couldn't help us, of course.
But I was trying to call him, I wasn't getting a response. That was the hard part.
So that was a...
Boyd Smith.
But I'd be glad to do that, that's fine, yeah.
On culverts, how many of the current work that you've done, did you use PGA?
We finished up with what we had for last, we need to get more, but we did use that on most of them. It's just like the last two that had some stone. We just need to, the town truck has been down and that's why we haven't gone over to get more. But we will, I mean...
I'm amazed through the tech, how many towns are, Guilford's been sending a truck once or twice a week over to Wakefield to take a load, so, and it's free?
Yeah, no, I agree, it's the way to go for sure. We'll stock it back up again here soon.
When we get onto budgets, I'll...
So are you on the, you're our rep at Lake Region Planning, right?
Yes, I just became vice chairman.
So you'll be able to tell Jim who to call?
Yes.
Yeah. Call the chairman if you want, I don't care. They usually don't know anything, but... Oh, wait, I'm the chairman.
Well, Dave's coming in in a few minutes. They didn't charge us for those...
You know, you don't get charged, maybe you don't get what you need. This is what we need, so we gotta win.
But...
All right, moving on, do we want any more discussion about this year's budget?
Yes, I have a number of questions.
Let's go to that.
Okay. Remember you and I talked about tree cutting?
Yes.
And I suggest a major change.
This for this year or this for the budget?
This coming year, and I don't know where you wanna put it in the budget.
You're talking about the current year.
Current budget or next year's budget? Were you talking?
I'm talking about current budget.
Oh, okay.
Do I introduce this?
Yes, you do.
All right, I'm doing one step at a time here, people.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so are we done with the current budget or the current season? Or the operating expenditures for 2019?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Deanna?
Go ahead to the side.
The Honorable Lloyd Wood have any more?
No, current budget, no.
All right, so let's move on to the 40 through 12 highway budget for 2020. And you submitted your budget, which is $103,000 more money.
From last year?
Just saying.
I don't think so.
$21,000.
$21,000. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You had $21,000 more money.
Yeah, yes.
And that's...
I broke them all down.
All... Same here.
So on catch basins?
I was at mine.
I went up, I went up $100 in catch basin cleaning because, well, we went over by $100 this year and I don't expect it's gonna get cheaper next year.
I have a question about catch basins. There's 71 catch basins that you're responsible for, right?
Correct.
Is it $50 or $60 per catch basin?
I don't believe they do it by the catch basin, I think it's just time.
Okay, 'cause you told me you thought it, a couple of years ago it averaged out to 50 and your figures are right on. While they're doing the catch basin, who inspects it to see if it's not broken?
So we do it together. One of my guys goes around with the catch basin cleaning guy, and when the top is off and he's like, "Clean it out," it gets inspected at that point.
So the catch basin program costs more than just the company, doesn't it?
Correct, correct.
And where is that in your budget?
So I think it is, I think I may have it in the budget for, you know, a man to go around for two days is included in that cost.
Yeah, move, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. And I do have a list. And I do have a list, you know, we have a list that we do for when we do our, our work. That's, that's an older one, but we, this is, I have three pages of detail on each one, basically like, uh, they're not numbered at this point, but Kyle Joseph's, uh, you know, exit pipe from catch basin, catch basin, twelve-inch steel, missing bottom, you know, so we, we have one on every, now, twenty-six clean, clean out, uh, outlet for better flow, things like that. And it's, we actually have three pages of that. So we know what needs to be done. We're not going in blind, we know where we're at with everything.
There's something you need to be incorporated.
Are we prioritizing based on whatever, right there?
Yep, yeah, basically, um...
Priority.
Yep, we put a priority to it, you know, the ones that need to be.
So we've got...
All right, Dave, are you on a schedule?
Oh, uh, for nine fifteen.
No, no, I mean, how long you can be here?
Oh, no.
On how long you can be here?
Yeah. Do you need to toughen now? I, I need to be out a little before ten o'clock.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, so I'll tell you what.
Okay, um, one of the bigger expenses that came up is the roadside mowing.
Right.
We, we got the, the new, uh, bid from them, and it came out to just a hair of a twenty-eight hour.
So it's gone up nine thousand dollars, and what are we expecting from that? I mean, did the nineteen, we paid them seventeen, eight, twenty this year, so are they gonna do any more mowing this year?
So...
Because that's a ten thousand dollar increase.
I don't think there's more mowing, as much as they lost their shirt this year, it's their first year doing it, and they realize they can't do it for that price. So we got kinda lucky that they bid at that low, and we know...
Did every road in town get done?
Uh, for the most part, yep.
Next year, every road will get done?
Yep.
And what about some of the unique Tuftonborough town areas? And I'm thinking around the parking lot at Nineteen Mile Bay, the two ears that are parallel to, uh, um, to the state highway? That's...
Yep, should be moved.
The trees are growing up, right?
Yep, yep, all should be moved.
Are there any other areas you can think of that we need to mow?
Not off the top of my head, it's not...
So we're doing the, um, the others and talk about the bank, not going to the transfer station?
Yes.
Is that part of the mowing program?
So they can only reach so far on that.
Right.
And, you know, and that was one of the things we had in our bid.
I, I took a look at that when we were up there the other day, and I don't understand why we would entertain mowing beyond worse than mowed, uh, up on the side.
You're just gonna cause erosion, go too hard.
Well, right, so if we get, if, if the objective is to get rid of the brush and to turn it into grass, then you got a problem with mowing the grass way up on that impound and, and unless there's some overwhelming reason that the brush can't continue to be there, which is, I think, in there a long time, why do we wanna mow up that? I, I don't understand what the, what the benefit would be. And, and so maybe there's something I'm not seeing there.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to, I, my feeling is if we're gonna mow that whole thing or clean all the brush off it, we need to put something like Jumper or some reasonably strong erosion control, or we're just gonna find ourselves in another box. I guess, back to the mowing contract, they've gone up nine grand for ten, depending on what they did versus what they charged. I just wanna make sure that, I can't imagine that they made a fifty percent mistake. So if there are areas that need mowing that didn't get mowed, then we need to include that on our list of stuff to do.
The one thing that, um, they did say was, hey, if they, next year they do it in less time, they won't charge us the full amount as well, which they, it came, they came recommended because they did a job for another town, I think, uh, I don't know if it was Middleton or somebody, but they did a job for there, they quoted it for a higher amount and came in less, and they were obviously entitled to the contract price. And they said, no, just pay us for our time, that's all they were asking. So I, I do feel pretty good about that.
I mean, I'd try my life for one more year doing that, and if that's the case, then I guess we got a winner. But if they just look for a check for twenty-eight thousand bucks again...
Well, if this, yeah, and, and so if, if this is a, let's say, a calibration, okay, we, we estimate it was gonna take less time, we honor the contract rate, now we know what it's gonna take, that's one thing. If we're looking at ten thousand dollars a year, you know, okay, next year's thirty-eight, next year's forty-eight, then, then it's...
It gets up to thirty, it was sort of buy and mower, I mean, it just gets crazy, doesn't it?
Right.
But, you know, I, I do feel that it took longer this year because it was growing up really bad.
Yeah.
I think it'll go faster next year.
Right, because we missed the year before.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
So hopefully it'll answer.
The other thing you went up on, twenty-five hundred bucks is tree removal?
Yes.
Both of these issues are, um, I have two tree cutting, isn't there a second thing they gave you? Or did you just give me two tree cutting?
I have one for her.
Oh, okay. All right, um, this is, uh, legislation by hand, which I haven't had a chance to read this. I guess I'd have to... Can you read it quickly and maybe we'll do Jeffers? Because I wanna pass this budget today, I don't wanna...
Well, I think this is a repeat already. Haven't we all seen this already?
I believe so.
I think we've all seen this before.
Okay, so did change from the last time?
But it never, it never, we never voted on whether we were gonna go that route.
I did it, I did it in July ninth, and said, wait until the budget's...
Okay.
Okay, and we were gonna talk about it.
I can't remember that far back, Lloyd, you know?
You and I talked about this, basically, it's to put out the bid, contractor that has every possible way of removing trees, correct?
Yes.
And that on Tuesday they would come, uh, after the storm, they go around and pick up, and we're the guys that cut trees. And then it's, it's ranked the other things as they have time to do it. Trees that are dying, that have been tagged, and there's, what, over a hundred, right?
There's a lot of them.
Okay, more than a hundred. Trees that are damaged by the snow pile, means they're too close to the road. Then, let's say you need an area at an intersection that needs to be groomed, I don't know, for better visibility, because when you come to a stop sign, you need legally be able to see four feet, and we need to improve that. And it would go down, and then there may be some special projects you have where you wanna, um, get back to the stone walls, so you still have the canopy and still seen it, but, and then, then your friend who has the rock pounder can break the rocks up, they get put back on the stone wall, and now the mower can go along at this speed instead of this speed. And have I left anything out?
Uh, I didn't pay for it, I guess is one of the things. I'm in full agreement with all of the things you said. My concern is that fifteen thousand bucks isn't much cover.
That's why I say put it out to bid, and we cannot accept bids or not go with it.
No, I think we absolutely have to bid it out, but I'm wondering if, if, we need fifteen thousand dollars for tree removal annually. We spent eleven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars so far this year.
And that's being very conservative, because we still have...
Yeah, I know, you're...
We have more.
First of stuffs have absolutely had to get done.
And there's another one after the storm that has to be done by bucket truck.
Okay, so now you got another couple of grand?
Yep.
So now you're up to thirteen. So I think that fifteen gets expended on a emergency add-on.
Just, just, just doing what, what we've been doing, yeah.
So if we wanna get into this program, which I don't disagree with, it may be that we need to mourn it, you know, or do something.
Possible, sure.
You know, I, I just don't know whether, well, having been to the budget here, budget committee means, I don't think we can add another thirty grand to this number and at So that's my concern, is how do you get to this place without adversely affecting the organization's budget?
Okay.
So I... Who do you generally use for trees?
So we use a couple, a few people, just that we don't have all the eggs in one basket of some kind, but, um, it's been Shane Leveron and also Carpenter Tree Service.
Yeah. I mean, I wonder if we could flesh this out enough to give it to those guys, and I have, watch this on a cost, what will be a good budget or an input budget for this sort of activity, this. And you know the areas that Lloyd's talking about, right? If you, and I know I have to brief him, I think that's your job. The hazardous trees, the intersection visibility, the, uh, brushing out the stone walls, and next year's maintenance issues on the roads, that would be Federal Water and Ledge Hill and whatever other roads you're planning on paving, let's say. So if you picked out those items, just sort of got together a blueprint of what you think a year's worth of work would look like from our perspective, what would that cost us? You know, if Shane Leveron came in, what, what do we, what do we talk about? Are we talking twenty thousand, fifty thousand, and what, which money would we need to put together in order to accomplish this?
So is that something you want me to get together with them?
I'd like you to, and then we could, because I'm not gonna, and this is just me speaking.
Yes.
I'm not prepared to include it in the highway budget as we see it.
I didn't anticipate.
I'm not dismissing, I think we can talk about it.
Yep.
I mean, we don't know where we are as far as...
Well, just, yeah, ju-just as a, you know, to roughen up, okay? You, you mentioned the possibility of saying, one day a week, that we have, we get, have a crew dedicated to work for the kind of town. So what's a daily rate for a tree guy? Fifteen hundred bucks?
At least.
Okay, so fifty, fifty, so that's seventy-five grand. That's seventy-five grand right there. I, I'm just saying, at, at that, at that rate, so this is a, we're kind of, we're, we're moving into a whole nother league.
And how does it, but we also need to talk about how does it positively impact other aspects of the budget?
Don't disagree, right.
Well, what was Jim, for example, who made the difference? He'd taken a tree down on Sodom Road, while the, the truck is there, it can reach in and take that monstrosity that's in the corner of the cemetery there. When it comes down, it's gonna only take the cemetery out, it's gonna be across your road.
Well, that's it.
And whatever. The point is, the point is, he was being expansive and said, we can work something out.
Right, because Sue's already talked about needing fifty thousand dollars a year for the next ten years to bring up the cemetery, so...
Right. And what I did is I borrowed this from Center Harbor, they went on this program and...
Well, what's their cost? They're not that much bigger than us.
Well, they only have seventeen miles of road.
They're not anywhere near as big as right now.
Do we know what their cost was, or that's, I, I could ask, yeah?
Well, let's, yeah, let's do that, and see, see what they actually do, because a lot of their roads are pretty much what we have for roads aside from the, oh, no, the state roads are state roads. Yeah, let's do that.
Thank you.
Hold up, uh, Dave, what is Dave in here for?
Uh, to go over the work that was done, update, an annual update for the RSMS, to go over what you, what you did and what...
Okay, so the twenty-one, I'm sorry, the twenty-one five that this budget's gonna have is nine thousand in roadside mowing, twenty-five hundred in true removal, five thousand in spring maintenance, and five thousand in fall maintenance, and then another six hundred dollars that I could...
Three hundred dollars in, uh, sign replacement, because we're actually over by like five hundred this year.
Yes, right. So you're perilously close on your fall maintenance to having spent it all. The spring maintenance, you're... Well, you're almost exactly at, you're over actually at your fall maintenance from what you had budgeted. You're just about at your spring maintenance.
We didn't really do all the things that we were hoping to do, and that's why I thought if we put it in for next year...
Well, as I remember, uh, you know, coming out of town meeting, we knew we, we had a, e- even with the plus up that we put in to the budget, we knew, because the winter was so tough, that we had to take a conservative approach to everything in order to get through the year, and you've done a great job, I think, of...
Thanks.
Of, you know, controlling expense. What I hear you saying is that there was spring maintenance that was skipped on, uh, because at the end of the year, the snow falls, we get a plow.
Well, it was winter, it was only the second.
Right.
But I remember that Lloyd Wood said, um, it might have been just, like, the both of you saying, don't go over on any of these lands. That was pretty much what I heard.
Yep.
We did our best.
Yeah, thank you.
But you did go over on fall, so we're assuming that this coming year's not gonna be a whole lot different from last year.
Well, I don't...
We finally got to the point where three hundred grand's gonna hang on our winter maintenance. I mean, we spent two sevens, so that's pretty close, I mean, you gotta...
Well, and winter's not done yet.
No, I appreciate that.
Right.
I appreciate that, but it's not like we're at three hundred and ten now, and...
Well, the last couple of years, we were, the last couple of years, we were really hammered, and we were, uh, really underwater in terms of budget money to do this stuff, and it's nice that we're not facing that this year, uh, for sure.
But we're almost double what we were on winter maintenance from two thousand fourteen, so I think we've crooked up on that.
I think a lot of towns are in the same boat.
Every town is.
Yep.
You spent two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars between October second and May second, uh, last year, oh, excuse me, January first to May second, and every single town is the same way.
Remind me...
Every, every private development is the same way.
Remind me why we spent forty-one thousand dollars on foam, that's in two thousand eighteen. Was there, was that a storm or something?
That was hurricane, remember the hurricane?
Oh, that's correct, yep.
Was it hurricane?
I think so.
Remember, uh, Sodom Road was out for a week?
Really?
Four days.
All right, um, any else on this? I'm, I'm pretty happy with it.
Yep.
I think we've got a...
Yep.
All right, I gotta make a motion that we approve, uh, highways and streets budget forty-three-twelve for five hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye, no? Wait, was that discussion? You're not voting?
I have a bunch of things I want included in the budget, no.
Are you, well, I'm sorry. Do you ever wanna start again?
No.
I don't mind.
No.
Only second, you need to speak up. Are you sure?
Yes.
Because I'll make a motion that we table this, and not...
I've been allowed to speak, I have no issues.
All right. Well, you voted no, so there's, there must be some issue. I mean, I'd rather go into the budget committee with consensus if I possibly can, but if we've got two, three, two, two...
I expect you to, I expect you to speak like you always do, you do very well.
I'm sure I will, but they're gonna wanna know why, and I don't know why, so... All right, let's do Mr. Jeffers. Slow me down if you have to. I'm not trying to push these things through, I'm just trying to get stuff done. Hey, Jeffers, Lake Region Planning? Hey, Jeffers, regional planning commission.
About RSMS. If you recall, the town engaged LRPC to conduct the RSMS road surface management system analysis to drive the, to drive and assess the condition of the roads last year and to then utilize that using the forecasting system through, utilized by regional planning commissions around the state through, and supported by UNH T squared and Technology Transfer and Department of Transportation to give an analysis of the conditions of, of the roads broken up into quarter mile segments. And then to utilize that software to give a work with the road agent and, and the selectmen in developing a schedule over the next nine or ten years of work to be done. The software provides a number of different options for types of work and then and associated costs and projected extension of life on those roads. And there were a number of scenarios that we came, we came up with three different, three different scenarios. And we gave a presentation to the, in the fire station looking at what the current conditions are, which is what's shown on the sheet in front of you. And then if you were to increase the budget five, you asked for an increase in the budget over five years. Or a five percent increase in the budget annually, what would be, what would the town be able to do? Then ten percent, and you also did ask for a seven and a half percent scenario. And those were provided. What I believe that you decided to move forward with a ten percent increase, so I provided to you the map of current condition based on last year and then the with a ten percent increase, the details by, for two thousand nineteen year. And this is an annual update where, that was requested by the town. And which we said, okay, that makes sense, so it becomes a living document, and so I want, my aim here is to find out how much of this work did get done? Was there any work that didn't get done, or was there any extra work that got done on these quarter mile segments? And then, are the costs realistic? And then we can, then we can take that back and as you requested, we can update that, update some of that information into the model. We're not gonna do a full, let's retweet the next ten years, but it's good to, it's good to get a a sense of what's getting accomplished and we like to have a check in on how realistic everything is. It is on model. And I appreciate you squeezing me in and I, I just recently found, I do have a meeting at ten o'clock, and if we don't get through all of this, then I certainly can't.
Well, Jim's got a, a list of what he did this year, which is going to be reflected by the, for instance, North Line Road work that he did with Colorado.
So is, is this more on the paving? This is more paving, right?
Yes, this is road service.
So when we talked to Frank Carroll, he came in to visit with us, you know, we learned a little bit from him.
Yep.
And so I know that you had on the schedule chip ceiling for Ledge Hill, and after we had it, you know, it was looked at by the professionals, I think Allstate came in and said it didn't qualify, it was past the ability, you know, for chip ceiling, it was not not a candidate at that point.
And this was the Ledge Hill?
Correct.
All of Ledge Hill? There were a lot of segments.
Well, on, on that particular, on, on the chip ceiling, they looked at it and said it's not a candidate. So we didn't do that.
So the section six, section seven, section nine, section ten, section eleven. Those sections did it good. And did we do the overlay? We did do the overlay on Amhill.
So if you remember correctly, when he said, you know, breaking this out and jumping around and doing all these quarter mile sections?
Yeah.
He's like, you know, it's not cost effective and.
This year, we bundled the projects and he saved us twelve thousand dollars, because he's not moving his equipment from one corner of town to the other.
If I recall correctly, the, the numbers, the cost numbers that are in your model?
Yeah.
Are state numbers?
They came, they worked with, they worked with all states, paving, come up with those numbers.
And when we looked at them compared to what we get, and, and I think the pricing we get from Frank Carroll is, is good, and working does, is, is outstanding, but it looked to us like the, the quarter mile segment numbers we got out of the state was somebody'd say, I wanna pave ten miles of road, so you take that and you divide it, take that number and you say, all right, so a quarter mile, if this, ten miles costs this, a quarter mile is just this piece of it. But that doesn't include all, any of the mobilization, demobilization and other inefficiencies associated with it. And so for us to pave just a quarter mile segment was way, way, way more money than, than what was in the, in the model.
So we took the yellow and red and addressed it. I mean, we did Dame Road.
A lot larger section of Dame Road, because they were there, and, and honestly, it, it deteriorated a lot worse over the last winter than we expected, because you had done that prior. Last winter was really hard on it.
And it also gets more traffic because the trucks take that as a shortcut.
Which section, you got the map, which sections Dame got done?
So we did, I believe, four, five and six.
Okay, so four, five and six should be blue. And then what else?
Just base coat this year, right?
Correct.
And then we're gonna top coat that next year.
Right.
And we did Brown Road?
We did the top coat on Brown, correct.
And that's from.
Which is already blue. They already has it as.
Okay, so we didn't do anything on one, two, three or four?
No.
Okay. And what else did we do?
We did Sawyer Road, that was previously dirt.
Is that even on here?
Yeah, it's just a little, little, little dimple up by the Ospe Town Line, yeah.
Right.
It's right on the line, but.
Just this little piece right here.
Yeah.
Thousand feet.
Is it that much?
I think it's fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, yes, plus the intersection.
Your scales are on.
And that, I've heard compliments on you, went fifty feet back rather than just break the stop sign.
Does that ring right on the line?
Super.
Oh, good. So that was your idea, but it's working out.
Sawyer Road runs right on the town line?
Yeah, for, for that, yeah.
And, and what else did we do? Because that's not on.
As far as paving, that, that was the, the three roads that we paved.
Okay, and Carol.
Dame, Brown and Sawyer.
Yes. Then.
And Sawyer, they did both base coat and top coat. Is that right?
Correct.
And what did, did Carol give us a thought for next year or would Brown Road?
He did, yep. I think I may have given you this copy, but you do have, I have more copies if you want to review it again.
We're, we're gonna check on one thing.
Was that the? I don't really have the grab on that. So this is what's suggested for upcoming years.
So the rest of Dame Road?
Next season.
I think you voted on that.
Yes.
You voted on.
The, the, this is work for, this is coming summer, twenty twenty.
So it's all of North Line Road.
Right.
Reclaiming base coat. All of North Line Road between Federal Corner and.
Ledge Hill.
And Ledge Hill.
And then up, all of the rest of Dame Road, so all the yellow. Ninety-eight hundred eighty feet, so. Middle section, thirty-six hundred reclaim base.
So I think on, on Dame Road, it was the last segment, which would be.
Eight. Right, it's, it's, it's a, it's a section between where you paved and Ledge Hill, right?
Yes.
Yep.
And we're going back the other side of it this year?
This got the one on the A and.
So it would be seven and eight, I guess, segment seven and eight.
Six, seven, eight.
I think we already did six.
Yes. Four, five and six.
We did, yep.
Right.
But he's got on here.
That's for twenty twenty-one is, is the, the lower part of Dame Road.
I see, I see, I see. Okay, so nineteen, you did that. Reclaiming Ledge Hill, so we're gonna just do the Ledge Hill Road end of, of Dame.
Would you like me to print, I have your motion here from that day, the like of what you want to do, print that off?
Sure.
How many miles of road is that, these two projects?
Well, let's see how many segments, I guess there is exactly. So there's what, five there and two, so that would be a mile, would that be a mile and a half, I guess, or somewhere between a mile and a mile and a half, I don't know each segment exactly. The last two segments are exactly.
This is the map, magnetic major, I mean. We have fifty miles of road. We do one, one and a half miles a year. We're like the person who owes us taxes and is paying one seventy-five, they get farther behind.
Every year.
Every year.
And I think we had agreed that we're gonna gradually move forward, move the number up.
So we, we actually did include a little bit more for next year than we previously had done. It was a little bit more, and I think we discussed that, we discussed that.
Now, what you, you have done in fairness is before we repave Ledge Hill Road, we're getting an estimate for the catch bases to go in, right?
Well, that's what we're hoping we're gonna get from.
And here's where you and I have talked, hey, if we can mitigate the water that's going under, the road is gonna last longer, isn't it?
Sure.
Just like, for example, you have Carroll with his special equipment, has put the shoulders in, and guess what? They've stayed. You know, it's a little extra, but in the long run.
It's money saved.
Okay, I'm one year out from Dave's paving study. We got one section of red gone, that's it.
So I bet you that, but my, my feeling is if he had come back and did an update this summer, there would have been more red in that area on Dame, because it took a beating, so we're, we're kinda.
And there'd be more red on North Line Road just as you turn off of Ledge Hill Road. That took a beating.
Yeah.
But what I think we need to set for a goal is to get rid of the red. I mean, it's gotta be a stalker, right? So whether we do Harvest Lane and we do Waterline.
Here's a thought and I'll toss it up.
All right.
We got another thirty-five thousand dollars this year, like we did two years ago, to put toward a road project, right? What if for that, a chunk of that money, we got all of Dame Road done and all of North Line Road done?
I think that'd be.
Do you like that idea?
I do. I know you're talking about the red, you know, and that, that makes some sense for sure, but at the same time, I look at Harvest Lane and I go, you know, I drive over it. It's actually not bad condition considering how fast.
No, I just brought that up because it's red.
Yep, yep, so I don't put that as a high priority. I almost feel like that road's fine for now.
Doesn't do a lot of traffic, okay, it's, it's a neighborhood street.
It's not a high volume road like these other roads.
It's a neighborhood street and it is through, but it's not a real shortcut to someplace, so it's not like people divert through there rather than going the other way.
And so just to remind ourselves and the board, this, we voted on this when?
September, I believe.
September. Based on the twenty twenty paving estimates that we received from Carol, I added that language. The selectmen agreed to Mr. Beans, we shouldn't call him that, we should call him James Bean or something, but not Mr. Bean. Recognition to pave North Line Road for hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy, full depth reclamation base coat. And the upper section of Dame Road, which we already mentioned going to Ledge Hill. Selectmen Wood expressed his concerns regarding Ledge Hill Road and the need to follow the paving study, which we're trying to do.
Yep.
Has agreed to obtain an estimate for drainage work, you know, which we're doing.
Yes.
Yeah, that was.
And I would think, now that we know that, and now we know we're gonna do North Line Road and Dame, this two sections, two sections of Dame Road, that why don't we, when we get HEB's plan for Federal Corner Road, plan on that little quarter mile there? We're gonna V-rate the neighborhood. So you're at section six, we're gonna have to work on Federal Corner Road anyway. I mean, I know it's not all paid, but, I mean, can we pick up that quarter of a mile and push our budget, that's a two forty-nine twenty, push our budget to two seventy-five?
So I see what you're saying. I would love to see what he comes back with on the study for that hill on Federal Corners is dirt.
Right.
One of our discussions was, well, if you paved it, it's probably gonna be in a little bit better shape too.
Well, that's, that's what Wolf Road did on Highlands Road, on Beach Island Road, on the hills, they paved.
Add three quarters of a mile that's dirt.
Yep.
Why didn't they pave the whole damn thing?
Well, they, it's exactly what you're talking, guys are talking about is for, prevent the erosion. We, we did it on West Line Road overfall.
We could actually include that if we were to structure a warrant article for that Federal Corner Road project. We could include the paving as part of that warrant article, which might be a way to just get that done out of the way. Now we've got all of North Line done. Seventy-five percent of Dame Road done.
Yep.
Then you gotta go through some debt.
Yeah, I do, and just a, a, a point to the earlier business of, you know, the effect, the efficiencies of staging equipment and that sort of thing, and I very much appreciate that. I do believe that in addition to, in the report, there was a desire to, there were like nine, nine roadways that were identified as these are sort of the priorities and we need to be able to address them. And, and then I believe that there was language, or there was a request to be able to have work done in multiple sections of town so that, you know, everybody, everybody gets happy, which did guide some of the, was one of the factors guiding.
so that, you know, everybody, everybody gets happy, which did guide some of the, was one of the factors guiding how, how work was spread out over the ten years, in terms of recommendations. So, if the, if an overriding factor is, and I'd be, I appreciate this, this feedback from Carol in terms of where the, where the numbers are from their standpoint, and I can, I can do some matching up with, you know, what was recommended in, in this to. We want to ensure, it's always helpful to get some feedback, in terms of react, what, what you're seeing locally, as far as numbers go. And, um, we can do a bit of work in terms of incorporating what was done and what's, what you have discussed here, and if Karen might be able to send me the, the language that was just mentioned about, this is where we go, that would be helpful.
For 2020, yeah?
Um, and.
If I add up the crack sealing, which is a significant number of items on this list here.
Right.
Comes up to fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars, we've got seventy-five hundred dollars budgeted for crack sealing, we haven't done any so far this year. This might solve two problems. If we were to reopen this budget to change that number to fourteen thousand, can we do that much crack sealing in a season?
There's, yeah, there's no doubt we could.
We're talking Wolf Road, Sergeant's Crossing Road, someone Ledge Hill, which I don't think needs it, but, yeah. A bunch of Ledge Hill Roads and Bay Road, wherever that is.
That's, that's.
Okay.
Well, as I, as I recall from past, from past conversations regarding crack sealing, it's most effective when the cracks are small.
Absolutely.
So, a lot of the road where we have cracks, that we've talked about crack sealing, if the cracks are already big, the, the positive impact of doing the crack sealing is, is very much diminished. So, you can spend the money doing it, but the idea of keeping it sealed to keep the water from getting down through the road into the base and breaking it up faster, isn't working. The time that we gotta beat crack sealing is on the roads like Sodom Road, Union Wharf Road, the ones that have been paved more recently, where you can't even, if, unless you look hard, you won't see the cracks. Am I right? Those are the ones that you gotta go through basically with eagle eyes, and say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna seal these because that keeps.
When water gets in.
Right.
And, and if you can keep the, it's much less expensive to keep the good roads good.
And I remember a conversation relative to crack sealing on Ledge Hill to the effect that.
It might be past.
It's, it's, it's past, it's past the point where.
It was grass growing a couple of places.
Yeah. Yeah, well, just gonna have to increase the mulling budget, right?
Or striping.
Yeah.
Put a stripe down the hill. So I think, I, I think moving more actively into the plan that Lake's regions put together for us is good for us. And I, I, hopefully Dave appreciates that we're making adjustments to make sense.
Yeah.
But I wanna make sure that we're not just falling behind again, Lloyd's right, if you got fifty miles of road, you wanna do a mile a year, it's gonna take you fifty years to get through it. We're gonna have fifty years to do this, so.
So, what we, our plan that we have been doing is, we do our bridges first, as far as cracks on, we take care of our bridges.
Yep.
And then we start with our best roads and work our way down, so the budget's gone, that's how we worked.
Part of the math is the low impact roads. The reason it doesn't work on Ledge Hill Road is, there's eleven companies hauling gravel over it. And those trucks just pound the road, correct?
Yep.
However, low impact, low speed, sergeant's way, it makes sense to do where ground is built. Now, that's the other variable there that I've been taught, thank you.
When you say the upper section of Dane Road, is that a full depth reclamation base coat?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's sixty-seven thousand dollars, maybe we push our paving budget to three hundred thousand, do that. Do another piece of road to that extent. You know, pick up one and a half mile of road. Get our, our time frame down to thirty-five years.
Which the roads only last twenty, but.
So again, we'll get you everything we've done.
Okay.
And then, hopefully the plan that we're gonna have for next year.
Okay.
Well, actually, roads only last fifteen.
You need to let Jim know who to call about the culvert study. Because we need to update that, we've done a lot of. Okay, so Dave's the guy.
Okay.
Because you lost your girl.
Yeah, Erin, Erin, she was our assistant planner, moved on to another opportunity that, uh, she was, she'd gotten very good at this, and we, but we need to move on, and we will have other people in for right now.
Because we're, we're doing a, and we also included the culvert study in our digital mapping service that currently exists online.
So they updated the shape.
They've got their update, but we need you to update our, our.
Yeah, so I guess that was a question, is, Karen can send you the shape file that has the updated information, is that the best way to get it to you?
Sure.
All right.
That wasn't so, we had an interim thing there without me on.
But hopefully, if you're conversant with them, it's, it's easy to.
The catch bases aren't included in that culvert study either, or are they?
We, they did do an inventory for us, they have an inventory on the culverts.
On the culverts, but on.
I mean, excuse me, the catch base.
Okay, because we're working on those too, but.
Okay, and, uh, our, yeah, that could be another conversation. But that'd be great.
Excuse me, Dave, are you clear on what they've done, you just need to know what they're doing, right? Is that correct? But I can get the information of what you've done, I think.
If you can send, I believe I'm, I have, I have the sheet from Carol and.
I can send Jim Asher if you'd like, just to get what you've done, just to make sure.
Yeah, just attach it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thanks.
Travis said.
Thank you.
Thank you for the road study.
Yeah.
Thank you for working hard for it. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On Lake Street, halfway down, there's this, what is it?
What is that?
Well, I believe it's because it's a, it's a catch basin that's.
What is a catch? Solid?
Well, I think that, that might catch.
That's where Jimmy Harrow is, Eric, just leave alone.
I think that might be where the church drainage comes out, is possibly into that, and then it goes from there.
How do we find out?
Well, I can tell you, we can lift the cover, and I can point to the direction that the pipes run.
I'll, I'll help you.
Okay.
I uncovered that when I did the science inventory down there, and I'm going, what is this?
Yeah, no worries.
There's ninety-nine percent covered up.
With just grass and stuff, yeah. Yeah, we had a good growing year this year for sure, but.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
Well, to, to, what, if we may, for a moment, dwell a little bit more on the paving, a suggestion came up somewhere in this conversation a few minutes ago about looking at the lower section of Dane Road for reclaiming base coat in addition and.
So it's the whole road.
So the whole, so, so, at the end of 2020, all of Dane Road would be reclaimed and base coated, and then 2021, they would come back and do a top coat, so instead of scratching it for two years, it would just be two years for that, then.
But we're still gonna do Federal Corner Road, that was what we had planned on. In addition to the, the lower part of Dane Road.
I'm just, just coming back to the question, I, I, I don't know, I, I didn't want, I didn't think we were done with that particular conversation, I just wanted to circle back to that.
So we need a, a number from Carol on finishing Dane Road. Because he's only planning on the upper portion.
Right, yeah, well, we've, we've got the measurements on it, but we don't have the calculation, forty-three hundred and forty feet is the lower end, right?
Right.
So.
It should be pretty close to the same, and it's two, two sections, it's two and three. I think one is fine.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could get Dane Road and North Line Road done with a base coat?
Yeah, really.
In next year?
Fantastic.
And we all agree, you know, we're getting a little bit behind here, we do have some extra funding. I know the, at town meeting and the committees have said, we can't, we like the way, you know, the roads are being done, the white blood.
Well, it's the easiest thing for us to push, I mean, if we wanna push the paving budget a bit, that's the easiest.
Good point.
Yeah. Now, with respect to using the additional money, it gets a little bit more complicated, because that has to, that money has to be obligated this year. So, I mean, we, we have to encumber those funds, or.
If we have, if we have all state under contract, we legally can encumber though, right?
Yes, that's right, but that's not waiting for town meeting.
Right.
So that's, that's the piece that gets.
Right.
A little bit concerning.
Because we've got another piece of money that.
Yes.
We need to do something.
We get, we, we have the, the additional funding that we got from the legislature this year.
That's right.
And if we don't obligate that this year, it just goes into the.
What I was getting at is that we had another piece of money, I think it was sixty grand or whatever, that it started out as.
Right.
To use something.
Right.
We should really end up, sit down.
Plan for it, yes.
Get a plan together for how we're gonna.
I've got a few projects.
I see that, I, I apologize again.
Do not apologize.
I didn't need to rush that boat, I certainly would entertain a motion to revisit the budget, if you think it's necessary. All right, so then we've got government buildings.
For highway.
Highway. Forty-one ninety-four. So far, you've spent a hundred, four hundred and eighteen dollars.
That's because, was it two years ago, you painted all the buildings and repaired them?
Yes, there's still more to do. The last windstorm, the door on the salt shed, on the side of the salt shed, they swing open, but somehow the wind was so strong, it broke the upper head of pushing, they pushed in so hard, it broke the upper header. So that needs to be redone. And also, we noticed that two, between the door, the garage doors, there's a cinder block, just one cinder block, it sits on the floor and holds the wood up. Two of them are broken over the summer.
Supposed to cast that.
So, we've gotta fix those, which, you know, we can do it, you know, basically, we just, we jack up the building on that section a little bit, pull that block out. We put another block in, but we fill it with concrete.
Yeah, solid blocks.
Yep.
The secret to success, and watering it in place also, so you can't get water and it's going underneath it.
Well, I think what happens, one of the problems that we have going on is that it pollens right there in the winter time, with salt in the water.
I know, I know that at the CIP, you mentioned that there need to maybe be some reengineering as far as the apron, and what you're gonna do with heat and radiant heat and.
My goal, in, in the perfect world, would be that, instead of putting a heating system up high like that, would be, we pour a new concrete floor with, with heat in there, because you can open the door, let the heat out, shut the door, and it's still warm.
Right, comes right back. The problem, well, one of the issues is it's not, it's not insulated slab, so it's gonna be horrifically inefficient, so you really have to.
Escapate it out.
Excavate it out.
The, the other thing is, the building needs an energy audit in bad weather. What happens if it's leaking out the back?
Is it fully insulated or forget?
I, I don't know.
So, we think it's insulated.
Yeah.
I know we've added to it here and there, trying to touch it up, we fill cracks and kind of.
But the insulation might have shifted over these, it's a forty-year-old building, right?
Yes, so.
The thing that I'm concerned, thing that I'm concerned with, and you and I had talks about this, electric doors go in, and we never budgeted for you, your guy and the electrician, who had to improve everything back to the meter. On, on this one here, if it's heat, and for a few more bucks, this is the way we need to do it, I'll support you on that.
So, yeah, I think, I think we'd have to have Jack help us out with that and go through it a little bit.
Yeah, you gotta look at your.
The other person who might help you is Adam, he's redone a couple of buildings, and he's had a mason that redid the front of the Melvin Station, it was fifty years old or sixty years old, so he might be able to help you. Uh, the other thing is, to shift gears, is, in your budget, you need to make, take care of maintenance on the generator, right? Or is one purse, is there one line in the budget for that?
I didn't even know we was getting a generator.
Isn't it the emergency management budget?
We, I, what I recall is that we decided that all the generators, the maintenance would be handled by the emergency management.
Makes sense.
Yeah, then we have one contract, we get them all done, and we're not chasing Jimmer and Adam around and everybody around trying to figure out they're getting their thing done.
And it's operational, so you can get fuel, right?
Well, and you go for the doors.
Oh, we, so, if we don't get fuel there, our fuel comes from over at the State, State Department, but, yes, you're right, I think the fire and police get their fuel there.
So back to the building, I think you're right, if you're gonna change something, with regard to the heat, we need to do a heat audit, figure out where, you know, how much blown in insulation, how bad are the doors, all of that stuff, and, and just do it, I mean, put together a, a plan to do the whole deal and warrant.
Well, that's what was done here, it was Jack's, Alfred's, remember, we insulated a different section each year, and then, once it was insulated, these things here, and now he's doing the windows and the.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna give them air conditioning, but it could be, it'd be a good idea, and, you know, it's a, it's an area that we haven't really spent a lot of money on over the years, that I've seen.
But we now have the equipment that has to be at a certain temperature, or the hydraulic system just doesn't work, or.
Well, it's a lot easier, I mean, if, just from a labor standpoint, you get a little work out, and things start to cool.
Yep.
You know, if you've got a warm shop, they're gonna fix it.
A businessman.
And they're gonna, they're gonna do the repair, and why can't I just put baling wire on it?
Anyway, back to what we were talking about with respect to the budget, I, I'm confused as to why you only put a hundred dollars in for building maintenance for next year.
I actually didn't do any of that, I don't know.
This is for discussion, he doesn't normally do this.
I don't do this part.
Usually you folks have a project that gets put into maintenance, so he doesn't.
He doesn't do this?
Not typically.
What's he doing here?
Well, we figured where it's his building, maybe we could, uh, bring up the discussion.
Well, he does the maintenance.
Right, exactly.
What do you, do you have a maintenance number in mind for next year? Things you need to do.
I think in the past, it's just, I don't know, there's usually like fifteen hundred dollars in there, and we just.
Well, it's twenty-five in there last year, you spent four hundred and eighteen.
Well, when we go back, go back five years, all right? You spent nine hundred and eighty bucks in 2014, a little over six grand in 2015, forty-eight hundred in 2016, sixty-four hundred in 2017, sixty-six hundred last year, and twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred in this year, and we've only spent four hundred and eighteen so far. I mean, I, my recollection is that in some of these, there were some projects that we put in, like putting those new doors in and, and putting the exhaust system and stuff like that, that ended up going into the, the maintenance line. And last year, we did the painting, right? That's, that ran into that. I mean, just looking back over the last several years would suggest that we have more than twenty-five hundred dollars worth of work on an annual basis that we do there, whether it's a discreet little project or something. And I think while some of the, some of that work wasn't driven by you, it was, you were at least aware of it as we were going along, and I don't know what a right number is, but I know a hundred dollars is not a right number. And, 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 and my guess is that you couldn't put zero in there, so when she ran it off, she just threw a low, low number in. But one of the things that we have to continue to be aware of is that if we're not focusing on and, and doing some of these little maintenance projects along the way, pretty soon we got a big ball match to deal with, and that's not, that's not a good situation. Back to the heating system. Radiant heat is great. For an existing building, my understanding is it's it's, it's almost a prohibitive thing to do, to retrofit into the floor of an existing building, you know?
Listen, jackhammer.
Well, it's, you know...
Well, we have pulled out concrete before out of garages to do this, same thing. It wasn't a big deal, you know, like it's a couple days project with an excavator, and we saw a cut around the outside and just get it started, and it peels right up, and well, you could probably do that thing in a day if you had three guys on it.
It had a hammer bill on it.
Yeah, so, so, so maybe, you know, again, that's the impression that I have, and if that's not the right impression, great. But part of how we get there is we start investigating and putting some numbers together and saying, here's what it's going to cost to do it, and, and we're ourselves that can get it done.
And the envelope has to be better than I think it is.
Yep, yep, that's true.
No matter how much heat you create, it's all going out.
Yeah, the first place you want to start on any building is is tighten it up. And what always gives you the best bang for your buck in terms of energy efficiency is sealing up the cracks. Insulation is fine, but it's infiltration that's the big energy waster. It's the wind blowing through the building that...
Yeah, check your doors where there are, I mean...
I think the big doors we have now are a lot better sealed than...
Yeah, we've noticed a big difference with those, absolutely, yeah.
But there's lots of other crack sealing and stuff that can be tended to.
And if the goal in mind is to have a heated floor at some point in time, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, actually twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, then the work leading up to that is what we need to get done that's coming in.
Yes, if the envelope is tight and efficient, it allows you to make whatever decision you want to go, yes.
Yeah, we need to figure that out first.
You've got to do it in stages. It isn't like you put the heat in, then all of a sudden you start plugging holes.
Would those, like the cinder block project and things like that be things you want to add to that line, or? I know the energy thing's kind of more of a bigger...
You're talking about doing that this year, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's twenty nineteen work. That's stuff that has to...
And the doors, something with the doors, did you say?
So, yeah, we have to put a new header on one of those sheds up, up higher, but, but in this, one of the doors, we got to replace some.
Who's going to do that in this?
My guys would probably love to do that. That's half inside and half out. It's better than just out.
Yep, yep.
Well, you've still got money in this year's budget for that, and you need to just maybe table this until we get a better feel for, I mean, I take, just grabbing a number out of the air, and how many of Lloyd's notes would fit into the maintenance issue?
None here.
I mean, I'm not ready to say six thousand dollars is the right number, or eight thousand, or two thousand.
We don't know?
Don't know what the right number is.
But this is the first discussion that we've ever had, so...
Let's do that. Any more talk about the government buildings with Jim? If not, will we want an ordinance requiring plowing of seasonal maintained roads by the public? That's a really poorly written.
I know, isn't it? It's funny.
Jesus, who's, I mean, you've got a misplaced modifier there somewhere, I think. Okay. I don't know that we can require the public to plow.
Well, it was the other way around, I think, it was against, I think I left the word against out on there. Yeah.
We had a problem with seasonally maintained roads being plowed by the public. Is that what the question from us?
Two years ago, we did. Correct?
Even last year for a short time, but we ended up...
Between you, me, and one other person, the people who were just dropping their plow, thinking they were helping you, for example, on County Road, but when it melted, it washed in that guy's yard. Once you explained it to him, he stopped.
Yes.
So is it not an ongoing, is the ordinance that we currently have being effectively used to curtail it, so?
I don't think we have an ordinance.
Right, it'll be regarding establishing one, that's correct.
And my sense, my sense is that we don't need to institute an ordinance to overregulate. When we've had issues in the past, Jim has been able to address it with the individuals. Do you feel that we ought to have an ordinance with respect to plowing seasonal roads?
The seasonal roads? I don't know if we have to make an ordinance, but we did have the one problem last year with Lang Pond being plowed.
Was that the logger?
No.
That was two years ago. Remember the logger went in and dug it up? And once somebody had a conversation with him? And, and didn't he offer to pay for a couple of repairs?
I don't remember the details, but anyways, last year we found out who it was, and we said something to him, and it stopped. I don't know if that, you know, if I'm going to...
Did we do, I thought, I don't know if my memory's gone, probably is, but didn't we enact some sort of ordinance about plowing your snow off your
Across.
Across your road.
Yes, that's right.
So that's, that's been handled.
Yes.
That's been handled, right.
Been legislated. So if Jim and Lloyd can handle the occasional miscreant, the things they've done us a favor.
Now, I brought the subject up on Lang Pond Road when the police chief was here. We signed the waiver, the guy who bought the property on Piper Road and is going to build a house there, and I raised the issue to be proactive. That's a snowmobile trail. They just started to put up the signs on Lang Pond Road. And if, from a safety point of view, if that guy's going to start building his house and, and coming in from the other end to get to Piper Road, do we have a potential accident situation? And Andy was going to think about it. And I, you know, it's just like the plastic grate that was put in at the beach. I'm just trying to be proactive to save something.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, there's none of ordinance issues to that, no, that's just...
There's already ordinances, or state was, that people can maintain, for example, Wyland Road. And he does. He does it to his specifications, but we don't spend any money. So it is, there's already been a system working, right?
Yep, and I did get a phone call from, I think it was Jim Penio, asking about plowing up to Piper Road. And I said, well, that's not a decision I can make, that's a slum, and so I don't know if that's coming, or they already spoke about it, but that is probably heading your way.
Well, that would be a good thing, then, that we can establish the criteria.
Sure. The statute is fairly clear. There's no, it says you can't do it, but it has to be, we can't spend money, or aren't supposed to spend money, but if someone like a logger, as long as they're not damaging the road, and that's where you come in.
Where does your plow again to Lang Pond? On the museum side?
The second house at the top of the hill.
So you don't come down?
Yes, correct, it would be the second house.
You don't come down into the, I don't know what it's called, the rain garden, or what it was called?
He plows past that. That's where he starts the plow.
That's where we start.
That's the town line.
Yep.
And we plow through
To eighty-eight.
by the lake. It's number eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
So we go by the lake, and we go up to the second house on the left, which is number eighty-eight.
So how far is that to Piper Road?
A long way. Yeah, Piper, Piper Road's much, much closer to the other end.
It's probably double from what they plow now.
Yep.
So I guess the only issue that the road agent's going to need to know is if we're going to let this other person, if he comes in, plow to Piper Lane or whatever it is, then your crew can't just pile snow at the end of the Lang Pond end. You have to go somewhere with it.
My feeling is too, is once you start allowing that, what's going to happen? Somebody's going to go just plow all the way through, and that's going to be four problems in the future because that road's not designed really for the winter.
Someone has a driveway release for Piper Lane you had signed, and I think they're going to stop building something down on the water. That's probably the issue because Jim Penio's putting the driveway in for it off of Piper.
And
So it goes all the way to the lake?
Yeah, that's a seasonal place they're putting it, is that right?
I believe so, yeah. Who knows? So you never know.
Could be a million dollar house.
Be the second one.
Yeah, I, yeah. If, if I remember your essays correctly, to do, to turn that section of road into class five rather than class five seasonal, that's a town meeting issue.
Yes, it is, sir.
That isn't this board saying, yep, the town will maintain it to Piper Lane now. That, that becomes something that the legislative body gets.
That's right. Legislative body does, yes.
We're already fifty years behind on our roadmap.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so that's a talk to them, then. Anything else for our road agents?
I don't think so, though. You can check that, if you want, but I think everyone's on the agenda.
I guess you're free to go.
Thank you, guys.
I do appreciate it.
I have one question. On the post to Pier Nineteen parking lot, there's a no all-night parking sign that is totally opposite to what the sign above it says. What does it take beside an act of Congress to have that metal sign removed? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, all's I heard was the last time Chief Segori said he was going to handle it. That's, that's how I was left with the signs.
This is at Nineteen Mile Pier?
No, at the parking lot.
Because he said something about he just needed a decal or something like that to change something. It wasn't, we didn't need a new sign.
That's the sign. Correct?
Yep.
No parking ten to five.
What does it say above? Parking overnight with permit.
Yeah, what's the point? Whose sign is the red and white one? That one you missed, Jim?
So I think it is, but it's been there a long time. I think that one above it might be.
I've been talking about it for a long time.
You have?
Yes, haven't I? Do I have permission to go take the sign down?
Well, I don't know that you need to do it. Jim can do it. It's his sign.
I want to give, I want to give him a break.
It doesn't matter. We can take that down in five minutes. I can do it in my own time. Not a big deal, if you want it down.
Yeah, I mean, it conflicts, conflicts with the yellow sign, although I I don't know if there's some legal requirement for those red and white things.
Okay. Solve the number, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, give me a call. I have a weak mind and a strong back. I'm really curious.
I'm telling you, Jimmy Hoffa's in there. I would need a loan.
He's an amico, I got.
Okay, a little loan? Legal?
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Did Mark Howard contact you, Karen, about ZBA? I asked him to give you a call, he walked and give you an estimate.
I know, I haven't received that.
Because he has his finger on the pulse.
So we're not ready for this? Because I'm, I'm a little concerned about ZBA and conservation.
Like?
Because I think conservation's already created some legal requirements of their land transfers and all that stuff.
Yes.
I don't know that to, I mean, that's, that's a twenty-four hundred dollar reduction conservation legal. And how do, how do these numbers relate? ZBA's going down to five hundred, another twenty-four, another five for cemetery. We talked to Sue about that.
I see there's a vast one there.
There's an email in here from, from Sue.
Yeah, five hundred.
That said five hundred.
Okay.
We're just going to see if maybe Mark touched base with Diane. Maybe that's what happened. Right about.
So we've got six and five. I'm sorry?
Maybe Mark touched base with Diane. I can check. Okay, I'll go check.
Okay, so that's okay. Trustees of the trust fund.
Yep.
I shouldn't say anything on this television show.
They recommend, they asked and got a six hundred dollar request.
I'm not going to say anything. Because I'll just get myself in trouble.
Yours, right. Shy, quiet country boy.
Well, while she's doing that, we have something else to sign. We've got a property tax levy. We're going to get into the signature of this first and the materials. For six million, five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Now that we've set the tax rate.
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Diane didn't speak to Mark Howard, but I just spoke to Jackie, and she said the zoning board agreed upon, they didn't think they needed anything for legal, but they put in five hundred, you know?
Okay, how about conservation? Do we get a, do we get something from Steve?
I don't see anything attached, but I'll ask about that as well. Any other, before I go back?
Yeah, could just ask about conservation.
Conservation, okay.
We haven't heard from, from, thanks. We haven't heard from Steve, then let's just hold his budget.
Okay.
Boy, this is great. You can look at the layout.
Okay, we've got a mowing contract with Corey Hunter for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And he also does snow removal, right?
Um, fall cleanup, spring cleanup, weeding, brush pruning, mulch, brush mow, 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 I don't see a cloud.
I understand that Kyle Joseph's not doing fire stations anymore. And we have town beaches. Go ahead.
Diane did say she, whether she spoke with the people verbally or as you see the emails, but they all came... but they all came from the individuals, so Steve gave her that number.
Are you comfortable with the plan?
With pleasure. You okay with this now?
Yeah.
Legal?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I move legal forty-one fifty-three. We approve in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, we're comfortable with conservation. That's the only question I have is...
She spoke to Steve and...
But between the three of us, we also agree with him. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, this is the first year, twenty nineteen is the first year we had a separate line for conservation. We put forty-four hundred in and they spent four seventy-six.
Yeah.
He's got stuff going on and he's...
Some of it was paid by the two grins.
Yeah, that comes back as revenue. And hopefully they're doing that bookkeeping correctly. It really needs to go out as an expense off of conservation and come back. Maybe some of it they're paying out of their revenues, changed taxes.
I sit in the meetings and it seems to be appropriate.
Yeah, I just don't wanna find ourselves in August of next year trying to figure out what...
Yeah, Sarah, yes. Comes from, yeah.
Do we wanna continue our relationship with Corey Hunter? He seems to be doing the fine job.
I think we get him at pennies on the dollar, so I'm pleased.
Well, I don't mind putting... It's just leaving the data be putting it out on the street. So I'm happy we're gonna work it on forward and then maybe in twenty twenty we might put it out there, see what happens. All right, I'll make a motion that we sign this agreement with three hundred for sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You want a couple of things on that eleven eight over to Chris?
What?
That one right underneath. Yes, if you go through those, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good morning.
Yep, some you might have, yeah.
Can you put this back? Really?
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice?
Well, I think I'd wanna have him come in, but all right, I'm gonna read you the email to the board. So there's been a lot to talk about. In addition to the fire station, one eighty-nine Middle Road Tower proposal, Verizon is further looking to improve the cellular coverage in Tuftboro and is potentially interested in constructing a wireless facility on town-owned land located at sixty-nine Sodom Road. I wanted to reach out to you to see if the town would be interested in going into lease negotiations for the use of a portion of town land. Verizon ZW, whatever that means, would need to lease space fifty by fifty for the tower compound. Will require a hundred and twenty-foot tower to be constructed. All costs associated with the design permitting and construction of the project will be covered by Verizon. It's just preliminary.
Who signed it?
Who signed it?
Yes.
Tim Yee.
That's the one that worked on the fire department one? So I wanna know if you guys would be interested in that, too?
Real estate consultant group, whatever, structured consulting group. Is it... And my question remains, isn't... We're now on Sodom Road, which would be...
It's a highway garage.
The highway garage, yeah.
The highway garage. Isn't there already a cell tower just over there?
Yeah.
Yes, just down to where Clayton Gallagher's...
Is that being...
And that's only eighty-five feet, I think.
The way you've outlined.
Not functional.
So that's how it doesn't work?
I can be sitting and Clay can be sitting.
I mean, are they used... Is anything connected to it?
Yes, it's being used. However, we sit there within sight of it. Our cell phones can't reach it.
Well, Verizon isn't on that tower. Okay, drawing to somebody else, so... You know, and so maybe they have been unsuccessful at leasing space on the tower.
Well, I can't imagine that leasing ground is gonna be any less expensive. I mean, that's kind of a permanent thing, especially with a hundred and twenty-foot tower. Now we have to... I mean, obviously, even though it's town property, which I think they're gonna avoid ZBA and planning, they still have to go through that process.
I sat down with the chief when Mr. Yee approached him six months ago. And I said, where's the nearest project that he's been involved in with the municipality? And he's researching that. I personally will drive to that community to see if...
I mean, I'm all for having better cell phone coverage, but I... I just don't know that Prospect Hill is the place to be. And on the backside of it, I mean, I'm not a cell phone guy. But you're gonna reach up over the top of Prospect Hill and somehow come down the other side where the people are. Or you're gonna be hitting from there part of Led Hill Road and maybe some of Mount Road. Because of really highly... I mean, there's people.
The county is months and months behind relocating their tower on Thompson Hill. Where the shooting range is for the county.
Right.
As you've got Goldthwait Hill and...
Goldthwait Hills and...
Yeah, and E one, that's another Verizon project for the state. They're already a year behind.
But is that...
Let's say TNT.
Does that county tower have cell phone coverage?
Not cellphone, but...
It's radios.
We have dead spots for our police and fire.
Did anybody participate in the co-op's town hall last night?
No, I was at planning board meeting.
I was down here, too. I didn't get to do it either. I was gonna...
I didn't.
Because I'm gonna make a...
I was getting my food.
I went on television.
I was training.
I guess you'd have to come in. I don't wanna...
Okay, no problem.
That's all about that.
Okay.
He is the same individual that did the fire department presentation, right? That contacted chief about putting a tower...
Yeah, what happened? Putting on church steeples? Put one of the steeples up on Tuftboro Corner. You know, they just don't wanna pay anybody. That's the whole deal.
That's right.
That's just my public or personal opinion.
There are some counties that's where they're in all the churches.
Yeah, why not?
And they're protected.
The Tuftboro's Board of Selectment, this is a public hearing notice on the community block, development block grant project at...
North Country.
North Country Village. This is a public announcement for a public hearing. We're gonna hold three consecutive public hearings. Did we have... Did you guys read this?
Yes.
Fine with me. I scanned it.
They sent the draft to me and I just took a couple of words that were duplicative, but that's all.
Okay, public hearings on November twenty-fifth. Isn't that Thanksgiving?
Monday before.
Two thousand nineteen, nine AM, at Tuftboro Town Office. Community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand annually is available for economic development projects. Up to five hundred thousand for the facility, up to five hundred thousand for housing projects and up to three hundred and fifty thousand for emergency activities. Up to twenty-five thousand is available for planning study grant. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. The public hearings will be... We'll hear public comment on the following. One, a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for five hundred thousand in community development block grant, facilities grants. The fund will impart finance, the complete replacement of the distribution system, including services, gate valves, blowouts and restoration of surfaces. At North Country Village, co-op, there were fifty-seven unit manufacturing houses and parks located at one hundred Willow Avenue in Tuftboro. The majority of the houses are of low or moderate income. The housing and community development plan, the residential anti-displacement and relocation system will also be available for a couple of...
Yeah, I have to work on those.
You do. Interested persons are invited to attend and comment on the proposed application. Please contact the town, six oh three five six nine four five three nine. I guess it doesn't really affect us as a board other than we have to accept the grant and then do a distribution. But if they need to have the public hearings by... Start by the twenty-fifth of November, it is for five minutes.
She said they can do them all that day?
Yeah.
Do you anticipate a lot of people showing up?
I don't, but...
I don't either, because I'd offer to have it in the fire station where there's all room or room.
Well, maybe we should reach out to the fellow that was here who was the chairman. How many people from North Country Village are gonna show up?
I'm just thinking of their comfort.
Right, I'm sure the...
Yeah, that's in the... Before I put that in the paper, yeah, okay.
I was just gonna say, I'm sure that the... I'm not gonna say it anyway, all right? Just get myself in trouble. My wife says you can't listen your way into trouble.
I like that.
There were some other...
Yeah, I don't know if we need... It's up to you, but we can wait or not, but that's the next big movie.
Okay, when's the chief of police coming in again? Do we know?
Uh, is he... I forget. He's usually till the end of the month, I believe.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that we hold this...
Sure.
Till the end of the month?
Eighteenth.
Is it?
Okay, so nine eighteen? So that's not too far away. It's actually our next meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So remind me or if you wanna pull this out.
That's cool.
Do that, that's fine. This is my opportunity. Joe's gonna love this. Okay, on the... With regard to the Carroll County Broadband Initiative, there's a meeting coming up on the... I think it's next week.
Fourteenth or something.
On the fourteenth, right. And there's been a lot of discussion about... And you really should read or could read this if you're interested, about the cost of a network and how to implement putting in a network for high-speed internet. And I found out last week that in their eminent wisdom, which I find being very facetious, the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative is intending, I believe, to give away their rights to have fiber optic cable installed on the poles that they own for high-speed internet access in order to assuage their cable operators who are now negotiating rental agreements on the pole. The rental... Their... I hate to use this term because it's being overused in Washington, but their quid pro quo is that the cable companies are agreeing not to install electrical lines so not to be in direct competition with the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative. Well, there are a couple of problems with that. First, the Department of Public Works down there in Concord might have issues with multiple electric services on the same poles. That's why we have PSNH and we have the co-op.
Yes.
And we don't have poles with a million lines all over.
And right now it's a condo arrangement.
Right.
That's the type of law that...
So they're gonna pay rent. The cable companies are gonna pay rent to the poles. They don't have an option other than to do that. How are they gonna get to their customers? So I suppose the amount of rent they pay is one thing. But to absolutely ban the cooperative from ever being used to hang fiber optic high-speed internet lots, I think is doing everybody in the co-op's power distribution area an enormous disservice. We've looked at the Carroll County Broadband Initiative, looked at the actual expense. And I think at one point, and I know that the co-op has heard from installers, Sandwich was talking about a three-year payback on wiring everybody in town. It's not an impossible thing to do. It may be more management than the lazy, overpaid CEO of the cooperative extension wants to do. But that shouldn't mean that we're gonna give up all rights to having ever, to ever doing it or finding ourselves, or the cooperative members, and we're supposedly the member owned, having to foot some enormous legal bill to get consolidated or whichever other cable company has to get off this particular contractual agreement. So my plea to the viewers of this YouTube video is to call your... Call the man who likes to call up your feelings now. I don't know how else it's gonna get here other than by fiber optics. The... Looking at what Wolfborough was thinking about doing with wireless is not as effective. And if, going back to the cellphone issue, if the wireless installation is as effective as the cellphone installations currently are, I'm not gonna benefit and you're not gonna... Most of the people in Tuftboro can not benefit from my...
We're not urban enough.
Yeah, it's... I mean, I'm probably the last person to mention my part in internet, but downloading, I'm sure, is enormously fast on these wireless operations. Uploading might be a little bit questionable if you're gonna try to upload something, but anyway. Joe should start going to these...
Under the paper clip is a nice article that is very expansive. I clicked it.
Yeah, it's not as impossible as it seems. And I think the community's, by banding together as a county, you know, there's a lot of roads, there's a lot of lines, there's a lot of open land, but it's still... You know, when Sandwich can do a study and it shows a three-year payback, they're not a whole lot different from us.
No.
I think it did say something like they wanted us to provide them information on areas that needed or something?
Yeah, I'll do...
You'll do that? Okay, good. Thank you.
Would you state where the meeting is? You said it was the fourteenth. They didn't say that.
I'm sorry. It's in Multinborough.
Or at the library? Or at the school? At what time?
I know it's at ten o'clock. I just honestly think it's at the library.
Did we put it in your yellow folder maybe for that day?
Isn't it amazing how these issues get far, just like solar energy?
I can find that, Joe, and send it to you.
Yeah, would you mind?
Yeah, send an email. Yeah, let me know, please.
Okay. Got that, got that. And...
Is that the Nineteen Mile Brooklyn?
Yeah, there's some data loss. We did talk about this at one point. Was it last Friday?
Steve mentioned it. Steve mentioned it.
Right.
It was Monday.
Oh, Monday, yeah, I'm sorry. So when do they do to come in? This is, I'm talking about Normandow Associates and the 19-month work study.
Looks like they'll have a draft view soon, right? I think before Thanksgiving or something. They didn't think it would affect the overall report much. I kind of scanned it, but I didn't...
I don't recommend a public meeting before we submit a final report, which would be, probably be in this sometime, in December. We need to have this put to bed by December, because if we need to do it again next year, we need to know that we need to do it again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I have a concern.
Okay.
The baseline study is done now once every 10 years. So that if we ever needed to protect the town's interest with the situation, I'm going to go back to my prosecutor days. If you give me some information that you're relying on and you're stating your case on, and I can find out that, oh, a month's worth of data wasn't involved, I certainly would bring it up. Do you understand where I'm headed with this?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we can require them to redo the whole study. Again, it might be a little bit ominous.
Yeah, and I understand, hey, my car breaks down and has a flat tire, so... But if I'm overthinking this, please tell me. Or at least think about it. And I'd be willing to say this, you know, to whoever's here for Normandow.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do, is when Normandow comes in, if they're missing a month's worth of study, then they're going to get 11, 12 of the round that you allocate for it.
But I, but I support the study.
I'm not ready to accept your initial premise. And I want to clear that up. We had never, that I had known, made the decision to do baseline studies on a 10-year basis. It happens, we did one 10 years ago and we did one this year. That doesn't in itself constitute a program.
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, you are correct there.
I mean, it may be that when we compare those two, we need to do it every other year. Or we need to do it every...
Five years.
We need, we need to talk to Normandow.
You and I are on the same wavelength there. I just wanted to make sure I was part of the team.
No, I don't like reading up for a little bit, either redo or a little bit rather than that for payment reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other business?
I have a question. I know it's not public input, but what happened to the tower down at Melvin Village?
We just talked about that.
Oh, okay, I'm not familiar with you, Prospect Hill, this guy. I'm not familiar with someone's site.
It's Prospect Hill, yeah.
That is, oh, okay, so that's what you're talking about. And that's a 150-foot tower.
Somebody said it was less than.
I thought it was less than that.
130. 130.
Do I hear 140, 140?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought, and the other, the only other thing I want to mention is from our Verizon and everything else, and when all the people come up here in the summertime, that brings down your access as far as no signal is concerned. Because the whole world is using it. Okay, so that's the other feature. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
They're actually changing the antennas.
Yep. To what?
Something better. What happened was...
Oh, yeah, 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 I read about those.
Yeah, what happened is there's so much data being used around here that they actually cut the voice down and add to the data.
Okay.
So that's why the phones don't work.
And I, you know, I'm as much doing as anybody else, but people talk too much. All right, any other stuff?
Do we have a non-public?
We do.
Well, it was on there to be with Jim, but as you know, things have...
Oh, it was with Jim? I thought it was about something else.
So now that I think about it, but that was that thing that's been put to the side for now? You follow me?
By the transfer station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no, I couldn't, do you follow me?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no activity going on with that right now, so it kind of worked out that he's not still here.
I'll, I'll ask them when we get out of here.
Yeah.
I don't follow you.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I, I don't.
Is there anything in your stack of goods over there, Mr. Wood, that you'd like to bring forward?
No.
You sure?
You've been very accommodating.
Sorry, yeah, I could be accommodating, but I could still be a jerk.
No.
All right. I got a motion that'll be adjourned for the, and the meet again.
Second.
Some other day.
18th.
13th, right.
18th.
Second.
All of them there?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.